June 21st, 2016. This is a regular voting, a special voting meeting for the Prescott City Council. I want to welcome everybody who came out today to get informed on issues and have an opportunity to tell us how you feel about some of the things we'll be talking about today. I want to let you know that there's going to be a regular meeting. We'll close the regular meeting and then we'll go into a special meeting which will approve the budget. During that period of time when we're in a special meeting, I will not take any public comment because I'm going to give you the opportunity in a regular voting meeting to have a chance to talk and give us your thoughts on the budget. Also remember that this is the last 5:30 meeting that we're having. When we start again next month, we'll be going back to 3 o'clock for the regular voting meeting. Do you have any introductions, Mayor Protam?
No, I don't. I was just thinking that I might want to exercise my option though and get it back on the agenda to discuss it for a while.
Okay.
All right.
All right, we'll have the invocation by Jonathan Millett from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilman Blair.
Dear Father, we are thankful for the beautiful city we live in. We are grateful for the hot weather that it is not as hot as it could be. We're grateful for the City Council and the mayor and the staff who dedicate their time to try and make this a better place to live. We pray that thou will bless them and the work that they have outside of their duties as members of the council, that they may be blessed with the strength and energy to be able to consider the important issues before them. We pray that thou wilt bless this city, that we may be able to meet the financial challenges and the economic challenges that the future holds. Bless them with the insights and the wisdom to be able to prepare now for whatever waits us in the future, so that when challenges come, we will be ready for them. Please bless us, Father, with the humility to recognize our weaknesses and to be able to, with the wisdom to address them, and that we may be able to make this place a better place to live, that this community may be one where people will want to come, where families will want to live here, where people who will want to move here for retirement, where businesses will come. And we pray for these things, in thy name, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Mayor Oberg.
Here.
Mayor Protam Lamerson.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Lizell.
Here.
Councilwoman Orr.
Here.
Councilman Chisca.
Here.
And Councilwoman Wilcox.
Here.
All present.
City manager, do you have any announcements?
I have one announcement. Mayor, as you know, several council members have requested that a sales tax increment for public safety be considered at the July 12th voting meeting. In preparation for that, a special council study session is to be scheduled for Tuesday, July 5th at 1:00 PM on the same subject, which will give us an opportunity to have additional time to provide the background for that, so that appropriate action can be taken on July 12th.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to the consent agenda.
Consent agenda, item 1A, approval of minutes from June 7th, 2016 council meeting. Item B, resolution authorizing disposal and conveyance of surplus water reclamation facility equipment to paid utility enterprises. Item C, adoption of ordinance number 49851523, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the sale of real property and reserving an easement for public utilities across the entirety of said property to the Smoke Eye Museum Incorporated, and authorizing the mayor and staff to effectuate any and all documents to effectuate said sale. Item D is the purchase of a Trimble S5 robotic total surveying station from Allen Instruments and Supplies. Item E is a word of a contract to Lion Engineering and Surveying for engineering services for the Willow Street and Cortez Street intersection repair project. And mayor and council, Public Works wanted me to let you know that on this council memo, under the project schedule, it says that engineering services are scheduled to be completed within 10 months of the notice to proceed. It should be within 10 weeks of the notice to proceed. Item F is the assignment of contract for SCATEC, CTEC services and licensing from Controls West Incorporated to Relevant Solutions LLC, and the extension of the contract completion date to November 1st, 2016. Item G is a word of contract for Sterling Infosystems Incorporated for background checks for prospective employees, board and commission appointees, and volunteers. Item H is the purchase of security cameras and recording device from Transource Services Corporation. Item I is the approval of contract with Prescott Newspapers for legal advertising services. Item J is the approval of employment contract with the city attorney, and item K is the approval of employment contract with the city clerk. Item L is the drainage easement and agreement with Ricky and Sue Willinger regarding property at 7 Perkins Drive. Item F is the appointment of Anthony Teeters to the Board of Adjustment and to the Prescott Preservation Commission, and item N is the resolution approving amendment number one to the development agreement with Prescott Animal Hospital and America First Federal Credit Union.
Okay, do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items 1A through 1N.
Second.
Do you have a motion, second vote, please?
The both aye.
Passes unanimously. Item 2 is the liquor license consent agenda. On today's liquor license consent agenda, there are two applications for a Series 15 special event liquor license. Item A is the Maya High Brew Fest with the Boys and Girls Club of Central Arizona, and item B is the Arizona Wildfire Council Incorporated, the Captain CrossFit Event. The applications for these two events have been determined to be in compliance with city requirements and are being recommended for approval.
Do you have a motion?
I move to forward special event liquor licenses 2A and 2B to the Arizona State Liquor Board with a recommendation of approval.
Second.
Do you have a motion, second vote, please?
Councilwoman Wilcox?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Regular agenda?
Item 3A, public hearing and consideration of a new liquor license application for a Series 12 restaurant liquor license from Gidget Renee Mojer, applicant for English Garden Tea Room located at 220 West Goodwin's Suite 1. Mayor and council, this is a request for a new license for a Series 12 restaurant liquor license. The police department has reviewed the application and found it to be in compliance with state law. The community development department has reviewed the application and found it to be in compliance with zoning requirements and building safety issues. The application and license fees have been paid. The application has been posted at the proposed location for the required 20 days, and no public comments have been received. And the applicant is in attendance. If you'd like to ask questions.
Would the applicant come forward? Want to tell us a little bit about the business?
Sure. We are opening a tea room, kind of an upscale restaurant, serving breakfast and lunch with a few craft beers and wines and cocktails. Operating hours will be from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM in the old Firehouse Plaza.
Any questions, comments from the council?
Welcome.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Wish you the best of luck, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Do you have a motion?
Mayor, move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion, second vote, please?
Councilwoman Wilcox?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Do you have a second motion?
Mayor, move to approve application license number 12133659 for a Series 12 restaurant liquor license for English Garden Tea Room located at 220 West Goodwin Street, Suite 1.
Second.
Do you have a motion, second vote, please?
Councilwoman Wilcox?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Item B?
Item B is the Walden Ranch Planned Area Development. It's broken into two sections. B1 is the public hearing for the proposed change of the land use for the property at 5350 Larry Caldwell Drive. I'm going to read the ordinance by the title that's associated with this item. It's ordinance number 4986-1524, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the zoning of certain property within the city of Prescott, generally referred to as the Walden Ranch Planned Area Development, located at and around 5350 Larry Caldwell Drive, consisting of three parcels totaling approximately 227 acres, from rural estate, two-acre zoning district, single-family 16 zoning district, single-family 9 zoning district, and business regional zoning district, to single-family 6 zoning district, planned area development pad, and natural open space zoning districts. And then the second part of that is the development agreement with the preliminary plat and the water service agreement.
Good evening, mayor and council. Just briefly recap the presentation that was made at your work session here a couple of weeks ago. A resolution number 4342-1551, if approved, would amend the general planned land use map on the current uses of mixed-use commercial employment, open space, to a low-medium density residential as well as open space. Associated with this resolution would also be a map amendment of the airport-specific area plan to amend it from mixed-use to low-medium density residential. Ordinance number 4986-1524, it's the rezoning ordinance from current zoning of business regional residential two-acre, single-family 18, to two designations, single-family SF6 and natural open space. And the subdivision plat, 215 lots on 227 acres, seven phases, 38% open space or 85 acres, and public trails. Just a comment about public trails. What's being proposed is from Highway 89 going eastward on the south side of the roadway is an eight-foot decomposed granite trail. On the opposite side, on the north side, is an eight-foot sidewalk, and then along Larry Caldwell Drive, five-foot sidewalks on each side of Larry Caldwell Drive. The decomposed trail, granite trail goes to the east to connect to a trail that runs north up the Wash and then through Center Point East and onto the Peavine Trail. Resolution 4343-1552 is the key provisions of the development agreement, the dedication of 96 feet in width for the extension of Larry Caldwell Drive and the side road connector, and the construction of two-lane roadway on the side road connector would include an on-street bicycle lane, additional public right-of-way at the northwest corner of side road connector and Larry Caldwell Drive for a southbound right-turn lane. And for the development, the owner agrees that all infrastructure improvements will be phased in a standalone and meet the operational requirements of the city. The owner also will be responsible for contributing to the city its fair share prorated basis cost of construction for the 89 side road connector intersection as part of that SR89 widening project, which is included in the capital improvement program. And finally, the resolution also would approve a water service agreement in the total amount of 75.95 acre-feet of alternative water support to development. And there are specific milestones for completion of each phase in the event of what happens in the event those milestones are not achieved. With that, mayor and council, I wanted to make you aware that Jim Chamberlain, the owner and the applicant of this project, is here this evening, and he'd like a few minutes to be able to give a short presentation to council.
Mayor and council, my name is Jim Chamberlain, 600 West Gurley. I want to be swift with you tonight, but I wanted to start by talking about the past a little bit. Up on your monitors, there are a number of projects that we have done in the last 25 years. Most of them are in the city, and I'm going to make a statement that I believe, and the statement is, the city of Prescott is the best city in the state of Arizona. And because of my 25 years, I'm not as qualified as you or the Chamber of Commerce, but I have been here a long time. I've lived here at the ripe old age of 68, 25% of my life. I've had homes in Southview, we built Southview, along with crossings and Center Point West and so on and so forth on the commercial side. So I've been here, I also had a ranch for a long time in Skull Valley. We sold bulls, 50 to 100 bulls a year, it was fun, Angus bulls, Savoines bought probably 100 bulls from me, the Babett ranches, so on and so forth. So I've known a lot of the old timers, the old ranch families here in the valley or in the area. Been here a long time. My kids graduated from Grand Mountain Middle School as well as Prescott High School, both of them. And my goal really is to come back and live here in Prescott. As far as today is concerned, Vinyl Vision is under construction on Larry Caldwell Drive on Center Point West that we developed years ago. It's on the list under commercial. We're going to enter that building and all the architectural awards contests statewide because we think it's going to be really a knockout. And we're very proud of being a part of bringing that company from California. In fact, we met with another company today, a manufacturing company Mr. Burt is aware of, are hoping to locate them here as well. They're manufacturing, they would go in Center Point East that we built many years ago. In the not-too-distant future, we hope to be before you with workforce housing on Deepwell Ranch. We've submitted preliminary plat the first time, we've got the comments back from city staff. We're going to resubmit for a second review on Thursday. We're here today really to talk about Walden Ranch. Walden Ranch, I've owned the property for a long time, and I've been sitting on the sidelines in hopes that the housing market would improve, and it has. We think we have the best project yet for the city. It's going to have a number of lots with big-time views. It's going to be a beautiful community when we're done, or even as we go along. The other thing that I'd like to mention with regard to the future is that we have hired a planning company to help Ron James, Deepwell, and ourselves with the planning of the recently annexed ground into the city. It's plus or minus 700 acres, but it is the future, and we want to do, all of us, when I say "we," I include Ron James in this statement, we want to do a knockout job there. It's the same firm that did DC Ranch, among others. So we hope to be in front of you a number of times in the coming months and years. One of the other reasons why I believe Walden Ranch is going to be a dandy is because Dorn Homes, who you, most of you are familiar with, is building in the lakes, they're doing a nice job, and we're partnering with them to do the high-class development, and it is going to be nice. In the work-study session, Councilman Lizell brought up the question, we're changing from 27 two-acre lots to five two-acre lots, which is true. But in the existing zoning, if you do the arithmetic, we could potentially apply for 720 units because of the business regional, single-family 9, 18, so on and so forth. Obviously, that doesn't work because there's no water for that kind of a project, and we'd have to import half a mountain to fill up a good share of Granite Creek. So we're going to have 215 lots on 227 acres. One of our commitments is to the Fippen Museum. That's going to be our entry off of 89, and we will landscape their property around the perimeter. The Fippen Museum, in my mind, is a city asset. If you haven't been there lately, as a cowboy art enjoyer, I'm much more comfortable in a saddle than I am in front of you here. But they have some of the best-named cowboy artists going at that museum. Just my opinion. My other opinion would be we need a roundabout there. Safety, we had a meeting recently with DOT. The statistics are unbelievable with regard to the safety regarding roundabouts versus signal lights, and it was quite an eye-opener for us in terms of how much safety is involved in that. Mr. Geis has already said we'll pair a fair share of the roundabout trails. Not only are we going to connect the Peavine to Constellation, but we're going to provide a unisex bathroom along the trails that will be available to all the public. The open space, Mr. Geis mentioned, we have 95 acres of open space, trails. As time goes on, it's unlimited what could be done with that open space. But I want to point out, there's two kinds of open space in my mind at least. One is public, like the Forest Service ground, and the other's private. The open space in this development is going to be dedicated really to the homeowners that live there, and that, to me, is a differential. And then after that, what I want to do is introduce Vic Chapman. Vic has worked for me for 32 years, 33? He's the general manager for us in the Prescott operations. He will be looking after things on all the detail and so on and so forth, and he and I have already spent a good share of our time, or some time, with staff, and the staff in my mind is another bragging point. We work in many cities. Prescott is the best one to work with with regard to staff. I've worked with a lot of different city managers over the years, and I have to say that I've enjoyed, Craig McConnell the most of all those, he's forthright, he looks after the city's best interests, and yet he is straight up with us, and we like the aspect of not having to guess what the city manager just said, you know, he's straight up, and we've enjoyed that, so we thank you for that. Vic, go ahead, please.
Mayor and council, it's a pleasure to be with you this afternoon. Thank you for your time, and thank you for the many departments that we've worked with with this project that has brought us here tonight. Walden Ranch is not unique to a lot of development, there's a lot of challenges with the property. You may recall our original submittal for the preliminary plat was for 286 homes, and that was reduced significantly from our original expectation, but once we got into the hillside ordinance constraint and, you know, larger right-of-way dedications, and like Jim mentioned, the floodplain area that we've got, our density reduced, and we weren't able to build that many. So here at the 11th hour, we did some further studies, and in light of the water issue that is before us all, we have changed the density again from 286 homes down to 215, which is before you tonight. That also is a 24-acre foot water reduction. We had a choice to make, do we continue with the original 100-acre-feet request and allow the 24-acre feet to go back through the performance clauses that wouldn't have been made, and we felt the right thing to do would be to make that change request and to reduce the water application to serve the larger lots at 215 lots, and so we felt good about that, and that's what's before you tonight. Also, as mentioned, we have a large area that is floodplain, and this historically is an area that has been sand and rock years ago, and so the natural floodway has been enlarged because of the mining operation that was there. We can recapture the floodplain by filling in and going through a letter of map revision with FEMA, but to work within the floodway itself requires a 404 permit, it's pretty complicated. So we're staying out of the floodplain. Here in the past, you know, eight years ago, we did recapture some of the floodplain that is being utilized in the project. Recently, we obtained a permit to recapture some more, and under this project, we'll recapture six more acres, and that's the extent of it. So with those complications, we've, again, had some challenges. Like Jim mentioned, we've got, we're excited to be able to provide a connection with the trail systems to Constellation and the Peavine Trail, and then we're just excited about the projects that we've got in the pipeline that will be before you. Like Jim mentioned also, we're going to be resubmitting on Thursday for the workforce housing project that we're excited about, and we're excited also about teaming up with Dorn Homes. And so right now, I'd like to introduce to you Dorn Homes Executive Vice President and CFO, Ellen Carpenter, and Dorn Homes Vice President of Sales and Marketing, Jim Gunby. They've got a very short presentation about Walden Ranch.
Dorn Homes has been building in Arizona for 46 years. We've been building all throughout the state, Toubac, we started in many years ago, through Green Valley, up to Prescott, and we are also building in Sedona. We started building in Prescott, excuse me, in 2011. We are currently building in five communities in Prescott and four communities in Prescott Valley. Prescott is our company's home and our company's headquarters. Many of our long-term employees moved to Prescott when we moved our headquarters here and now call Prescott their home also. We value our employees, and we were honored by being awarded the best place to work in the last two years, and so that was a great thing we feel. That's probably one of the best awards our company's ever received. We have some plans for Walden Ranch, and one of them is to include health and wellness within the community. It will be a community that will feature an amenity center that will have pickleball courts, community garden plots, fitness trails, which you can see on the vision boards here, and bicycling. We already spoke about the connection to the Constellation and the Peavine Trail, so we like to think of this community as a hike, bike, and garden community. Our customers will each receive new bicycles with the purchase of their new homes. Our goal is to build a community where families and friends can gather together to celebrate life events. Our vision of Walden Ranch encompasses just that goal. We want to create a special neighborhood that the city council, our development team, and all future residents will be very proud of. We have plans in the community to build a center amenity, we're calling it the barn. It's going to be fashioned as a barn. It's a place where residents can gather for visiting each other, maybe a cocktail or a glass of wine, they can have parties here. We may even be able to host some weddings. We're very excited about it, and I think it'll be a nice theme area for the community. And right outside the community will be a garden center that each resident will be able to get a garden plot and, you know, grow their own vegetables. It's a great place for, you know, the community to meet their neighbors, and we're seeing, you know, the farm-to-table. When we've seen this in some other communities, they've brought in chefs, they've brought in gardeners to, you know, just get the community involved in the amenities that we have to offer. We are also going to put in a dog park. We're very animal-friendly and dog-friendly at Dorn Homes, and we're excited to bring this to Walden Ranch. It'll be a dog park for the residents, for their pets, give them an opportunity to meet the other residents with animals, and also just generally meet their neighbors. The architectural styles that we're planning for Walden Ranch include craftsman styles, farmhouse, ranch styles, and many of them will feature grating porches on the front. And along with that, we're going to probably be offering between four and five different model plans and have two to three elevations that the buyers can select from. That'll give the community a lot of variety and opportunity for customers to, our buyers to be able to select something and really make it feel like their own. We've also got some engineered options that will be offered. Popular ones are room extensions, garage space, I mean, I think everybody could use more garage space, fireplaces, and that just names a few. The last community that we created with the help of the city of Prescott's building department was voted the best architectural style, it's got the United, in the United States, at the International Home Builders Convention in Las Vegas this past January, and we're looking to do that again with your help. And so with that, I'd like to introduce Jim Gunby. He's going to talk about the features that our homes have.
Thank you, mayor and council. Dorn Homes likes to distinguish-
Dorn Homes likes to distinguish themselves a little bit differently, and we think above our competition. One of the things we do is our Dorn Homes exclusive building science. And with that, we had three goals. One is better for the environment, better health benefits, which I'll talk about in a minute, and to save energy. We use, when we build our homes, we use a low-E window made here in the area. We use cellulose insulation, which is better for the health of the occupant. We seal everything. We clean the home a minimum of four times. We go above and beyond, so we're at an Energy Star III level, which is one of the highest you can get through that organization. Probably the thing is that we're going to, we're doing now is what we call the organic home, and this has to do with health benefits. The first thing is, when we build the home, we use low VOC materials, low or no VOC materials. It's volatile organic compounds. When you buy a new car, it smells real good, and it's bad to breathe. It's off-gassing of things in the car. So we use low and no VOCs. We vent all of our carbon monoxide directly to the outside, any heating or cooking appliances. As I mentioned, we use cellulose insulation. If you've ever seen anybody install fiberglass insulation, they're practically in a hazmat suit. So we don't want to put any of that in the home, so we use cellulose insulation. We minimize mold by rain gutters and also exhaust vents in all the wet areas, laundry room, bathrooms, and kitchen area. That's part of it, so building the home initially. And then the second part of it is getting the bad air out and good air in. Prescott was named a second year in a row by the American Lung Association as having the cleanest air in the United States. So we want to get some of that clean air in. So we use a couple main things. One is a device, it's a fresh air ventilation system. It's thermostatically controlled, and we bring air, the fresh air from the outside in and replace the bad stagnant air. Because as you're going into the home, you've got, your pets bring in dander and dust and dirt, and just stuff blows in, and your dry cleaning and your furniture and different things have bad stuff in there, so we're able to ventilate the house. And the second thing is, is we use a MERV 10, and MERV is a rating system. You get much higher net, now you're in a surgical or tight environment, but it's three-and-a-half-inch thick. It'll even filter out hairspray. It's so good. So it's getting, building it right the first time, getting the bad air out and the good air in. Couple things with that. We are so proud of it that we get a certification on each and every home. It's through the EPA, and it's Air Indoor Plus, and we actually exceed that. And we, each and every home we built is certified with a third-party inspection, both for the Energy Star that I mentioned earlier, and then also the Air Indoor Plus. So that's what we're doing now. A couple things we're investigating is low water usage. And I know you've, through the work-study sessions and everything, we've talked a little bit about that, trying to save as much water as possible. The fixtures combined with the low exterior water use will cut it down between 20% and 25%, depending on the family that's living there and the size and all. And then also, the last thing that we've started to investigate is rainwater harvesting. And I don't know much about that tonight, but we're going to investigate it. We've started that process. I'm not sure of the legalities or anything, but I think it's a good idea, especially for the clubhouse and the farm-to-table that Ellen mentioned. Those are some of the things that we do. I could stand here all night, but I won't. But thank you for your time.
Thank you. Tom, does that complete your presentation?
Yes, it does, Mayor.
Okay. Any questions, comments from the council? Any comments from the public?
My name is Jerry Smith-Fanara, and I'm not going to say anything about this particular development tonight because it's a done deal already, and a lot of the things were done before you became mayor or anything else. What I would like to say is this: I live in a four-star energy place up in Seattle, and I know all about the energy things. But I did want to just say something about what has happened over the years here. And it is when we had a young man that was a Prescott native that grew up with my sister, and he was the four-term mayor here. And when he was here, the town was given away. And I know that Prescott Lakes did not have the financial backing at the time. I went to Phoenix, I went to Washington, and I found out they were just getting federal grant money for South Phoenix buildings. And the night before the vote on planning and zoning, the mayor fired three members of planning and zoning and put three new ones on before my meeting there. Secondly, I saw what happened when Rowley Simmons was mayor here. A lot of things happened like that as well. And I know you weren't here, and you know nothing about it. But I will say one thing: deals have been done and done deals. And I've seen this happen over the years. I know Mr. Chamberlain. I know some of his developments. A couple of them were in floodplain areas, and they had problems with them, but he's built some wonderful places. I'm here about the roundabout because I've talked to 23 policemen from Prescott in the last two weeks, and they've talked to me about it and said, first of all, the other roundabout is ridiculous. It doesn't work. And if you're going to plan another one up in this area, you better make sure it works. I've heard this, they have just, let me tape what they had to say. And secondly, I really, I really hope. I knew Mitzi James from the time I moved to Prescott, and I knew her and her husband, and they were absolutely fantastic people. I haven't met Ron yet because I've been ill a lot of the time. But I think that when things are done here, and it's already happening with the new mayor, that people are being put on different commissions that have been here like a year and a half, and I think that's not good. Mr. Blair and I have, I was older than he was because he was born after me, but we've seen a lot of things happen here. You haven't lived here very long. You do not know. Jim has lived here a long time, but I really think that we need to get things together. I also think, I came here two weeks ago to talk, and I had four inches of different things that have happened through those different mayors and how people were just thrown to the wolves for those development people. I've been reading them over for five days and decided not to present them. But really, let's start having study sessions where people can talk. People make an effort to get here, and some of us aren't in good health, and I just really would appreciate it. This is the first time I've ever seen where we couldn't talk at study sessions. And secondly, the other thing that was done, I've been watching all the meetings in the last week and a half. A lot of road deals were made when the city manager was in his other position, and they were practically unanimously with one road builder. I really think that he needs to stay on, you know, in his former position for six months, and then you need to look for something different. I can say it, Mr. Palladini, because this is America. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
My name is Daniel Mattson. I polished my shoes. Shoes. Anyway, Steve gets it. So anyway, you know, to me, the need for the roundabout comes almost exclusively because you're putting all this housing there. So, you know, if they think a roundabout's such a good idea, let them pay for it. I don't think it's a good idea. On a low-speed area, it makes some sense, but to slow everybody down on a highway, you know, just because occasionally a car's going to go one way or the other, it doesn't make a lot of sense. Half these roundabouts are bogus. The other day, there was a wreck that happened because there was a roundabout. The guy missed the turn and rolled over.
Sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, I know.
So just for any future comments, the discussion about the developers' pro-rata share of paying for intersection improvements, which could or could not include a roundabout would be appropriate. The discussion of whether roundabouts are a good idea in a location or generally across the city is really not on the agenda. So the discussion really needs to be limited to the pro-rata share of the intersection costs, not the validity or the, you know, whether roundabouts are good or bad, in that location or generally.
Okay. Okay. Well, if they want a roundabout there, they ought to pay for a roundabout because I don't think we need to dump all that money into it when we have other things we could put the money into.
Okay.
My name is Judith Merrill, and I live on Sierra Peaks. I have four things I want to address tonight. One is that I want you to be very careful when you make a preliminary approval of a plat, because I have come a number of times to council meetings when the preliminary approval was brought in for final approval, and it was used to pressure the final approval, as though the final approval was a done deal because the preliminary approval was given. Somehow, make sure it's clear that if you approve this as a preliminary approval, that it's a preliminary approval and that some changes can be made from it, that it's not set in concrete once you've made a preliminary approval. Another thing is, I'm very concerned about water. I know they say they're bringing water, but if there's no water to bring, it's not there. So I'm very concerned about water. I emailed you this morning about, with a suggestion that to make these lovely trails available to everybody, there needs to be some parking at each trailhead. I said a minimum of one, but it would be lots better if there were at least two, because we have trails and open space in this community that people can't really find because it's not labeled. And once they find it, there are no parking signs, so they can't access it, and I think you need to make these trails accessible. I commented that you shouldn't be apologetic about asking developers to donate things and to give to the community, because they are getting a great deal from the community when they are allowed to group their houses, and they can build for much less money than if they had to spread out equally. And so even though it says they're giving, what was it, 35% instead of 25% or 38% or something that makes it sound really good, I'll bet you those lots that they're giving as open space are really not very buildable. And the last thing I'd like to comment about is the roundabout. I am one of the people who doesn't think there needs to be a roundabout there. And so I don't think we, as taxpayers, should pay a pro-rata, pro-car percentage to allow them with a smaller percentage to come in and pay less money. If the roundabout is being built to provide access for this community that's being built off to the side, then they should pay all or most of it. They shouldn't be able to just profit from the many, many cars that go up 89 every day and just count a few cars or a few trips that are made from their community off of the roundabout. So I'm hoping that you will not just do a count of the number of cars that go through there and then have them pay their percentage. If we don't need a roundabout there, then they should pay for the whole roundabout as far as I'm concerned. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. I'll take one more comment.
Bruce Senko, 3042 La Cuesta. I emailed most of you something today, just kind of saying we have some other priorities in the city. I don't know where it stands with the roundabout or not, but I think we have some areas we could spend some money on. The medians, as you come into town, they're disgraceful, they're an eyesore, and I think it's something you should look at. I live in one of Mr. Chamberlain's lovely neighborhoods in Southview. Many of you have heard from me, and I'll be back again until I hear something about the speeding in my neighborhood. I can't even get a 25 mile per hour speed sign, but we can talk about safety issues like roundabout. So I would like to hear from somebody at the city to address that issue. I think it's admirable that that staff gives you comments, and that we believe the staff, but in this particular case, staff is wrong. Staff has been wrong on several issues. So that's my comment.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt resolution number 4342-1551, admitting general plan and airport-specific area plan maps.
Second. You have a motion, second vote, please.
Councilwoman Wilcox?
Councilwoman Wilcox?
Yes.
Okay.
Passes unanimously.
Do you have a second motion?
I move to adopt ordinance number 4986-1524, rezoning 227 acres to single-family six and natural open space.
Second.
You have a motion, second vote, please.
Councilwoman Wilcox?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Do you have another motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt resolution number 4343-1552, development agreement and water services agreement.
Second.
You have a motion, second vote, please.
Councilwoman Wilcox?
Well, I have a question I would like to ask first. And I think it would be helpful to explain to the public the bigger picture about the roundabout. It's not just this development, but the general circulation plan that Simpoe has looked at. And, Mr. Mayor, would that be possible to have a staff member come forward and explain?
Well, again, the, as I mentioned, the discussion tonight and the reference to the developer's preference for a roundabout location really isn't on the agenda. What's on the agenda is the development regarding that intersection, is the development agreements which would impose on the developer a pro-rata share of the cost of the intersection in that location, regardless whether it's traffic lights, roundabouts, overpasses, whatever it is. And that's going to be ultimately determined at a later date. So what goes in that intersection is really not on the agenda. What's on the agenda regarding intersection is that the developer, by way of the development agreement, is agreeing to pay a percentage pro-rata share of the cost of improving the intersection to give access. So at this point, I don't think that would be appropriate.
Did you hear that, Councilwoman?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
So the motion to adopt resolution 4343-1552, Councilwoman Wilcox?
Yes.
Passes 6 to 1, oh, sorry. Passes unanimously.
Do you have a final motion?
Move to approve preliminary plat 15-001.
Second.
You have a motion, second vote, please.
Councilwoman Wilcox?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Item C?
Item C, approval of an animal sheltering service agreement with Yavapai Humane Society in the annual amount of $69,762. City contract number 2016-320, general fund.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. As you may know, back in 2011, the Yavapai Humane Society entered into a contract with the city of Prescott to operate our facility that's out on Sundag, Sundog Ranch Road. In 2011, when we first entered into a contract, we entered into a two-year contract, and then after that, we followed it up with a three-year contract. Since then, Yavapai Humane Society has expressed interest in a master plan build-out of that facility. So, we're bringing this forward to the council for approval for a one-year contract, so we can explore that possibility of a longer-term lease with the Humane Society. The police department is asking for your approval for that one-year contract in the amount of $69,762. And if there's no further questions, I'm...
Chief, chief, I do have one question, Mayor.
Go ahead.
You know, you have nothing to lose. You're out of here. Does the police department really want to do this? If you could have a choice, collect dogs and pick up animals, or would you rather have somebody else do it?
I think, I think statute actually dictates that we do, in fact, have the responsibility of taking care of that. Now, whether it's done on a contract with somebody else or not, the Humane Society, to my knowledge, does not even go out and pick up animals.
No, you guys do, but you don't want to house them. I mean, police don't want to do that.
Well, that's why in 2011, we entered into the contract to let them operate that. But for this year, we're just requesting a one-year contract, so we can entertain exactly what you're talking about.
Okay, thank you, Chief. You have other questions, comments from the council? Anything from the public? Do you have a motion?
I move to approve city contract number 2016-320. Second.
You have a motion, second vote, please.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Item D.
Item D, award of city contract number 2016-312, Asphalt Paving and Supply Incorporated for the Crystal Lane realignment project in an amount not to exceed $572,709.50 for the base bid, streets and water funds.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Steve Oros, Public Works. The item before you tonight is the award of a construction contract to Asphalt Paving and Supply for the base bid of the Crystal Lane realignment project. Essentially, the project connects Crystal Lane slash Janine to the recently constructed Deepwall Ranch Road intersection at Ruger and improves the circulation in that area and entrance to the airport. The bids were publicly noticed on April 24th of this year. On May 1st, there was a mandatory pre-bid meeting, May 11. We did receive bids, six bids, on May 26th, with Asphalt Paving and Supply being the lowest bidder. All the bids, the, the low bid was below the engineer's estimate. We have met with Asphalt Paving and Supply and reviewed their bid and references and past performance in similar projects, and everything is in order. And we are recommending the award of the base bid for this project. If there's any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
Questions, comments from the council? Any from the public?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council. My name is John Stonecypher. I'm the president of Guidance Aviation. And I'm, I guess my ask today is to reconsider the base plus alternate in this bid to realign Crystal Lane. We've been affected for the last 15 years with three of our hangars that are eroding, and there's a serious erosion issue with respect to the back three hangars which we, we hold the master lease. And this has been addressed with the city probably three or four times over the course of the last 15 years. The problem's becoming exacerbated now with the realignment of the road. I think the new construction, along with the removal of some of the foliage that's been previously removed from the hill in preparation of the site, is going to accelerate that, that issue. And I think we're going to run into some pretty severe problems within the next couple of years if it's not addressed. And moreover, I think if we consider it today, I think we're going to, with the synergy of this current project, I think there's going to be considerably less cost involved in building that retention wall today and, and reconsidering the alternate bid than if we try to do that at a future date. So, I think that's my biggest, my biggest concern right now is that maybe it should be considered in synergy. And if we increase the traffic on that road, I think the shaking of that road could cause some, some further erosion on that, on that hill. I don't know if Legend Aviation has a comment. I know that they have an interest in this, as does Brett Painter, my general manager.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I appreciate the, the opportunity to speak here. As Mr. Stonecypher said, I'm his general manager at Guidance Aviation. I wrote a letter that was addressed to you, Mr. Mayor, and also to you, Mr. McConnell, the, the city manager. I copied a couple of people, my boss, of course, on that letter. And I received a response from that letter from, although it was addressed to the city manager, I received a, a response from Jeff Burt, who is, I believe, the director and chief financial officer. And in that letter, he states that he understands our problems and would like to address them. He says that over the past six months, there has been some changes. In my understanding, on the drawings of July of last year, the, the retaining wall and the prevention of erosion to that slope was in those plans. Over the last six months, if there were some changes to that, we weren't informed of those changes. And Mr. Burt does apologize for that and not keeping us informed. In fact, he says that he regrets that guidance was not made fully aware of those changes and that we would be better informed as changes moved forward, although we weren't informed that this was coming to vote tonight. So, I find that curious. I don't know what the answer is to that, why we weren't informed. I also asked in the letter, who made the decision to not have the alternate bid? Who made the decision to take the parking lot out of the plan and also the erosion out of the plan? And we still haven't received an answer to that either. I don't know if it was a, a council meeting and it was voted on, or if it was just somebody decided to take that out of the bid. I've been up on the, on the berm. I've been in our hangars. I've inspected the areas behind it, the trenching along those hangars that, that are being done currently, putting some electrical lines down underneath, taking them from the telephone, or the electrical lines and putting them under the road, or under the ground, have already, you know, caused more erosion to Mr. Wood's hangar, Legend's hangar. As we put more lines under the, under the earth, it's going to cause even more erosion. As Mr. Stonecypher mentioned, the road being realigned and proximal to those hangars, all of the extra traffic that's going to be going into that airport, and it's my understanding that now this realignment project is actually going to be the main thoroughfare for the new terminal that's going to be coming into the airport. So, if you can imagine all of the traffic that's going to be coming in, that's going to be proximal and adjacent to that, that slope, is going to create even more erosion to that slope. We have two hangars, three hangars, excuse me, on that slope at 6585 Crystal Lane. We house millions of dollars of aircraft in those hangars. We have our, our maintenance workers going in and out of those hangars from time to time, grabbing gear, doing, you know, various jobs. We believe that it's a, a serious safety hazard to, to not address the erosion of that slope. It is said that Mr. Burt understands and appreciates our concerns about the slope erosion and the integrity of the hangar, the foundation and floor, and pursuing the following with respect to the facility. He says that the airport, with the assistance of Public Works, is retaining an engineer to inspect the hangar in sight to determine conditions, hangar structural integrity, and corrective actions that may be warranted. He says the preparation of an updated project scope for budget consideration and necessary approvals and the implementation of that project. We've already done all that. We've already looked at the erosion. We've already done core samples. We already know that the erosion needs to be taken care of. We have a budget right now that looks to me as the engineer's estimate base bid, base bid and the bid alternate, what came in at over a million dollars. The base bid from Asphalt Paving and Supply Incorporated is $718,060. So, we're close to $300,000 less than the engineer's bid. So, again, along with Mr. Stonecypher, my ask is that we approve the base bid and the alternate bid, the bid alternate, and get the erosion taken care of now and get the parking lot put in now instead of kicking the can down the road. It just makes more sense. The scope of work will save the city money and could possibly save us millions of dollars in equipment and the safety of our employees. Thank you.
We thank Guidance Aviation for bringing this to our attention, and we fully understand what you're talking about. I, I saw the letter. The director of economic development is Jeff Burt, and he's the one that's over the airport. What I'm going to do is ask city manager to step in here for a second. He and I have discussed this, and this is work that we know needs to be done, but I think we need to do it in a more methodical manner. And I'll let him address that.
Well, Mayor, in our conversation, what I informed you is I think that your staff got a little bit out in front of this one, that the project did not surface during the budget formulation process over recent months. And the next thing, frankly, I'm going to be very candid, the next thing we knew is we were dealing with bid opening and the bid results for a project that had three components to it. Number one, the realignment. Secondly, the erosion issue, which, and there's no question, if there's an erosion hazard and all indications are that there is a hazard and it needs to be addressed, it does need to be addressed. Then, there's a third component, which is a parking lot. And, you know, in, in the budget process, and I think we've communicated this to you, anything that was not absolutely necessary, and, and I would include in that the parking lot. It's a nice to have from a business development standpoint. It's great and so forth. But the approach, as I've indicated, is that the staff got a little bit out in front of this thing, and the bid should have been structured in three parts: a base bid for the realignment, a second bid alternate for the erosion, and a third for the parking lot. And that would have enabled us to have identified what the specific costs were and make a more informed decision on that. So, that's the background on it. No question about fixing the erosion, and that's what Mr. Burt's letter said. And we're going to deal with that immediately. It's unfortunate that we weren't awarding that tonight, but there's another piece of this. And, you know, that $150,000 difference or so, which may be reduced by $50,000 or whatever, $100,000 is a policeman. And that's what we're looking for in the budget process. And that is reflected in the recommendations being made to you tonight.
Councilwoman Blair.
I think I heard it right, but correct me if I'm wrong. Those are, those are our buildings that are leased?
Yes.
Then why wouldn't we protect our buildings and our assets?
That's not the, Councilman, that is not the point. We are recommending and we are, we are going to proceed with the stabilization. Now, there's another alternative here, and that is to defer award of this contract and investigate a deductive change order for, to take the parking lot out of it. But I think that, you know, certainly, that's, usually don't get the best pricing for that, and that's why the recommendation is that as it is. But I will assure to the council that, that the erosion problem will be dealt with, and it will be dealt with in, in very short time.
Councilwoman Lozelle.
Yeah, I, thank you, Mayor. Okay, so my understanding is that this is awarded through our, through Streets or Streets Fund or General Fund or both?
The, the realignment of Crystal Lane is Street Fund.
Okay. But erosion would not?
That's correct. But having said that, again, that work has to be done, so we'll have to find that money. No question.
You have other questions, comments from the council?
Well, yeah, I have one, still. Is the erosion tied to part of the realignment of the road? Out of curiosity. I mean, if it is, then why wouldn't we be able to use the road money to correct that problem?
Well, I, that has, you know, Public Works has been through that and could not make that connection. That question was asked.
Councilwoman Chiskin, do you want to say something?
So, with all that you said, Mr. McConnell, help me out here. Are you saying that we should revisit this, or are you saying that this is too far into the process to back off now and we need to go ahead and do something that may or may not, in our minds, be reasonable?
Well, I'm not sure what your question was.
I guess my question is, are, when you were saying that this may be a little premature, is this, is this what you were talking about as being premature?
Councilman, it's, it's the parking, it's the parking lot being included which is at question here.
Okay.
Had the parking lot not been included, this, we would recommend tonight that the road be realigned and the erosion be dealt with. In this contract. But staff got out ahead of it and did not, in my view, could have set the bid solicitation up differently. And there was no authorization about using general fund money in the tight situation we are financially about putting that parking lot in. There have been discussion over past years about putting a parking lot in at various locations, but as an absolute need in the general fund, that has never been validated. And so, from that respect, that's how we got out in front of ourselves.
Can we back up a little bit?
We can back up a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Orr.
Well, that's my question. Is this something that we have, can, can we not revisit this and come back with a better plan that, after listening to the concerns and...
Well, what, as I said, what we could do is we, and there are some problems with this approach. When we start doing deductive change orders, we get into scenarios where you displace bidders. And the, the city attorney can talk about that.
So, we have a bid.
In other, in other words, in other words, you ask the contractor, the low bidder, who has bid on three items, to take one of those items away, and that contractor gives you a deductive price. That, that may displace the bids because the other, other bidders have not had the opportunity to give their prices. And that's the problem with deductive change orders.
So, the bid for $718,060 includes, as I read it, the realignment, the erosion, and the parking lot?
That's correct. That's correct.
So, I guess I don't quite see the issue. I mean, all three of them are here on this bid.
From, Councilwoman, from a priority standpoint regarding the use of general fund dollars.
Okay.
And those general fund dollars would be used for the erosion stabilization and the parking lot.
Right.
That parking lot is what we got out ahead of ourselves with, that it should have either had a separate bid item or should not have been in there to begin with because we're, you know, it has to be funded from general fund dollars.
The $100,000, you're saying, is...
Yeah.
Mayor Proton.
Thank you. I'm not happy about it. However, having said that, and I understand where you're coming from, Mr. Manager, somebody got out in front of themselves when we put the bid out. Bid's been presented. Somebody bid on it. I agree with, with Councilwoman Orr, that that's what's being presented to us, three items. That's what this contract is for. We can either vote a yes or no, or we can defer it and then squirrel the deal on this. And then you got a legal issue. So...
And just to clarify, Mayor and council, it, the way the bid was structured, even though there are three items, there's two bid items, the base bid and then the base plus the alternate. So, you can't just drop one of the two items that make up the alternate and then award the bid. You'd, you'd have to basically allow for the, all the bidders to come back, rebid the, the base plus the erosion, and sort of reopen it up again. So, in other words, you'd effectively reject all bids and then rebid it as a, as a, either as a, as a road alignment... as a road alignment, base, and an erosion alternate, or just a single bid project?
Well, that's what I thought I just said. It's either up or down on this particular presentation.
Right, so if you, so if you approve the base bid, which is what staff was recommending, doesn't, nothing stops staff from going, from rebidding the erosion work as a separate project? I mean, that would, that would be, that's your sort of, because if you're going to have to go out to bid anyway, you can bid this current five, you know, to asphalt paving and supply, award that bid for the road alignment, and then immediately go out and bid the erosion work as a standalone project, with separate, from a separate fund?
Henry, you'll make a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Mr. Palladini just stated that what I was just about to say. We have a few options. Base bid comes from Road Fund. The rest is from the General Fund. We cannot, as you well know, wrangle the money. It's against the law. My recommendation, if I may, well, you have choices. Obviously, we'll follow your direction. If you do not award the bid tonight and delay it, basically you're delaying the entire project. Or you can go ahead, award the base bid, and allow us to work with Mr. Burt and Mr. Cox to immediately put the bid package together, which is going to be very easy and very short time, to go out to bid for the erosion part. We can easily do that, and I'm not sure if it's going to be really much cost difference doing it individually now or together. The reason is, we have been discussing that earlier, Mr. Oroz, myself, our city engineer, because the erosion part will be a smaller project, therefore that opens up the road for more contractors to have the ability to do these small projects, so it may come actually to our favor. So our recommendation is, if you award the base bid, immediately put the package together and go out to bid for erosion.
Okay. So as I understand it right now, in the budget, we do have the $572,000. That money is there. Do we have the $150,000 approximately that we need for the other two items?
Well, they're not in the budget.
They're not in the budget, so we'd have to take money from someplace.
Yeah, but, but the erosion is one of those, you know?
Things we just have to fix.
We just have to do it.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions, comments from the council?
No.
Any further from the public?
I think it's pretty clear.
Hello, Mayor, Council, thank you. Tom Giuliani, General Manager, Legend Aviation. I just wanted to add a few more items. I take offense at the characterization about staff getting in front. You know, we've seen drawings, we've had talks with all the engineers, with all the involved parties for a year now, and it's always involved this soil stabilization and structure stability is a needed aspect to this project, so an add-on. Parking lot is really not the most necessary aspect. It's that structure to hold the dirt back. So delaying it or doing separate bid, we don't like that, we wouldn't want that, but very important that we get this stuff done immediately, because if the road traffic increases right adjacent to this earthen berm, which is eroding rapidly, we're going to have destruction very soon. So, and if you go out to bid, an expert, but you may have a different party win that other bid, and then you're going to have two companies competing to work at the site at the same exact time. That may be complicated. But we've been working on this since a year ago. February 24th, we had the open notice or meeting at Centennial. We saw the drawings. I had conversations personally with both, was it Centec engineers and city engineers, and we reviewed all that, and that was the big issue for us, was preserving this earth so we don't lose property. So please take into consideration the timeliness. It, I don't think it's very large expense to go right with the full bid right now versus waiting and resubmitting and all those complications and delays. We have a huge event at this actual site where this project's taking place, September 30th, October 1st, the AOPA fly-in. So we're going to have several thousand people here and four to 500 aircraft in that corner of the field, and if that's a disaster, it will create a giant mess, so please keep that in mind, and thank you for your time.
Well, thank you, and I'll go ahead and just say very quickly that, you know, the issue is a communication problem with the staff here. We're not pointing fingers or blaming anything on you folks, I can tell you that. We just need to make sure that we get things right in the future. The second thing, of course, is that we got to make sure that we have the funding for this, and right now we have to go look for the funding. Councilwoman Ohr?
I would just like to say, Tom, I think we've all heard City Manager here and Henry say that this will be done in a timely manner, and I know we have that big event coming, and that's going to be a great thing for Prescott, so, yeah.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you. You know, the erosion thing bothers me somewhat in the fact that we are going, or starting to go into the monsoon season. I don't think we should be delaying anything to do with erosion. Let's get it taken care of. Be very candid, we, it's, and I can see what was recommended here, and I can see what the bids were. Just my humble opinion, I don't, I don't think we should be putting off taking care of an erosion issue out there.
Okay, again, I'll go back to Henry. How fast can you, do you think you can go through the process of getting an estimate and get in a bid and get it cleared?
The plans, a couple of weeks? Yeah, the plans, Mayor, because we have part of the plans, probably two to three weeks, then we have the bid process. That would be another
A minimum of three weeks.
Three or four weeks minimum, then of course we have to bring it before you. So definitely will not be done before the September 30th event. That's, we're pretty sure of it, but shortly after, so I think you add all this, we're talking about two to three months.
Councilman Lozelle?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Henry, in the engineering world here, we approved this tonight. Do they start tomorrow? When does this, when does this one wrap up? The one right now that you're proposing?
Yeah, let Mr. Oroz respond to that, but I think before September 30th event.
The, if the base bid is awarded this evening, we have it scheduled with the contractor to get the notice to proceed next week and get the, by contract, get the road open in mid-September.
Mid-September, okay.
Around the 15th.
When is your thing?
Well, my question is, you said the base bid, so that doesn't include the erosion, so it needs to be the base bid and the bid alternate?
Right. Okay, I'm with Jim.
Councilman Jessica?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, it sounds like we've got a problem of finding the money within the General Fund that wasn't budgeted, and so can we get creative and find the money in the General Fund?
Yes, we can find the money.
Okay, thank you.
We, I say we move forward and get this done.
I agree.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. I can find a motion. So we're talking about the base bid and bid alternate, right, Mayor?
Correct.
All right.
Move to award city contract number 2016-312.
Second.
To include, if I can, just clarify, to include the base bid and the bid alternate?
Bid alternate, yes, yes.
Second.
Yeah, motion, second vote, please.
Councilwoman Wilcox?
Yes.
Councilman Lozelle?
Oh.
Passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you.
Next item.
Item E, award of city contract number 2016-299, Dark Horse Incorporated for Professional Engineering Services for the Rodeo Grounds Electrical Improvement Project Phase One in an amount not to exceed $239,814 Facilities Management Fund.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item is to award a contract to Dark Horse Incorporated for the Rodeo Grounds Electrical Improvement Project Phase One. The contract's scope will include bid-ready plans and specifications for rehabilitating the dilapidated 2400 volt electrical system at the rodeo grounds, which is estimated to be more than 70 years old. The project will bring the system up to code and is planned to be completed in two phases. Phase one will focus on the grandstands, the rodeo arena lighting and controls, the Mack and building, mitigation of lead paint and asbestos, and improving the infrastructure for future needs. And phase one will also include service preparation and painting of the roof truss structure and replacing the roof. Also included in Dark Horse price are bid and construction phase services when the city does move forward with construction. And APS and the city are currently exploring opportunities for some project cost reductions, which may include alternatives for service poles, service pole location and meters. Phase one is estimated to cost about $1 million and is budgeted in fiscal year 17. Phase two will encompass bringing all the other buildings at the rodeo grounds up to code and is estimated to cost about a half a million dollars and will be budgeted in the fiscal year 18. Dark Horse was chosen for this project using the direct selection method, as authorized by our city code and also by Arizona revised statutes. Dark Horse is an electrical engineering design firm. They're currently working on sundog electrical improvements, and they accompanied the facilities management staff on a full-day inspection of the rodeo grounds in order to assess the electrical work that needed to be completed. They also provided a written scope of work and a cost estimate. This in-depth investigation will enable us to move more quickly through the process of getting the construction done. Going through a request for qualifications process would render completion of the construction unlikely by the rodeo in 2017. And Dark Horse specializes in providing designs that utilize state-of-the-art technologies, and they have earned a reputation for being extremely responsive and known for delivering high-quality plans and specifications. The project milestones, the award of the design contract would be the week, this week if it's approved. Phase one design completion would be December of 2016. Construction award in January, and phase one construction completed in May in time for the next rodeo. Funding of $239,814 is available in the FY17 Facilities Maintenance Fund. It also, that price is not to exceed amount. There are about $31,000 of allowances built into that cost because we don't know what kind of things we're going to find over at the rodeo grounds with it being as old as it is. And I have Darwin Reynolds here this evening. He can answer any specific questions to the project, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Questions, comments from the council?
Stephanie, I like your adjective.
Question, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
Is the Facilities Maintenance Fund part of the General Fund?
The Facilities Maintenance Fund is an internal service fund. Technically, it's funded by the General Fund.
Okay, thank you.
Stephanie, I just wanted to say, I liked your adjective dilapidated, which is so true, yeah. This is well-needed.
It didn't take long to search for that word, Councilwoman.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Any from the public? Do you have a motion?
I move to approve city contract number 2016-299.
Second.
Yeah, motion, second vote, please.
Councilwoman Wilcox?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ohr? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Next item.
Item F, public hearing for the fiscal year 2017 budget expenditure limitation, tax levies, and truth in taxation notice. At the special meeting, the adoption of the resolution number 43401549, adopting the final fiscal year 2017 budget expenditure limitation and city job roster.
Thank you, Dana. Mayor and Council, this is, as Dana said, the public hearing for the final budget. Just a few slides to go through real quick here. This is a list of our process to date, and today is our actual 10th public hearing on budget items and budget issues that we've discussed for the last six months. As you can see, all these different presentations have been over the various months and are available on our website for the public to review and have been after each of the presentations. Tonight's, at the regular meeting, currently is our public hearing. It's a public hearing for four different things: the budget, alternative expenditure limitation, the property tax levy, and with the property tax levy, also the truth in taxation hearing. Following the public hearing and comment from the public, and when that is closed, a roll-call vote will be necessary because the property tax increase is, has an increase, and any increase of the 2% that's allowed each year, this is actually closer to four, so related to the fact we didn't increase it the year before, about $66,000 as listed in the public notice for the truth in taxation. There will need to be a roll-call vote to proceed with that, that tax increase. Following the special, following the regular meeting, there is a special meeting where budget, the ordinance for the, the resolution for the final adoption will be considered. With that, the final budget as it stands right now is $167,288,761. $91 million approximately is the operating component of that, with $76 million being the capital component. And as we've discussed in the meetings, that's the budget, that's expenditure limitation, that's the upper end. A budget for a government is a planning document, but it's also a legal limit. So it is a little higher than we ever actually do spend. As you can see, in '16, the total budget was projected around $148 million, and we're projecting we're going to spend about $106. And that fluctuation is generally in our capital area as projects are postponed or deferred into the subsequent years. With that, I would be glad to answer any specific questions.
Questions, comments, excuse me. Mayor Protem?
Oh, thank, thank, thank you, Mayor. Question from Mr. Palladini one more time, just to clarify, make sure that I'm not wrong. If there are certain line item product in the budget as a whole, has those come forward in fiscal year 17? I can still vote no on those single line items without having to vote no on the entire budget?
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions, comments from the council?
Yeah, I would say, don't be surprised when those line items show up.
Okay, I do have a procedural question here. The second one is, is a vote on the property, primary property tax only. That is not the budget, correct?
That is correct. That roll-call vote is not even a vote to let, establish the levy, it's just a vote to proceed with the recommended levy that was in the truth in taxation hearing. Property tax ordinance, which will actually set the levy for 2017, will be coming back to the council on July 12th. Per state law requires that to be at least 14 days from the adoption of the final budget.
Okay, so a yes vote on two is not a raise of taxes at this point in time?
It's a proceed with the proposed increase, so it's, does not set the higher taxes, but it does indicate a willingness to proceed with that increase.
Thank you. Yeah, the questions, comments from the council? Any from the public?
Good afternoon. My name is Daniel Mattson. My comment is pretty much a matter of, as far as I've noticed, this is the first opportunity for the public to make any comments about the budget, and we're half an hour or less from the actual approval. I would like to suggest that in the future, it would be a nice idea to allow public comment early enough, even be at the meeting before this, so that if somebody did come up with some good change that needed to be made, a problem they see, there would be an opportunity to do that and then be able to, you know, fix it and do the budget. I've looked things over. I understand that these are caps and limits, and so I'm not all that troubled by any of the things that I wasn't thrilled with. I do want to make sure, just in case we do end up putting the 0.6% sales tax in the budget, let us make sure that we have the wiggle room to reopen the library on Sunday, which I think we probably do. I mean, you know, but in the future, it would really, really be nice. I think your citizens would feel much better about the whole process if we had an opportunity to comment on it before the night you're approving it. It would just go down better. Thank you.
Okay. And I believe, Mark, we've had some public hearings on aspects of the budget. This is the first one on the final budget, is that correct?
Yeah, I believe some of the public workshops, there was comment taken, but several weren't because they were for council information, and I believe, I can't recall if you allowed comment last, two weeks ago on the tenant?
I don't remember any time when public comment was accepted. I, I only know of one meeting that I missed. And pretty much, I mean, you, it would be a lot nicer from the point of the view of the citizens, if we, if we had an opportunity to comment a couple of weeks before you approve it, it would just, even if nothing comes up, it would make us feel like you're us feel like you're listening.
Okay. Fine. Any other comments? Come on down.
Mr. Mayor and Council, my name is Ron James, and I just want to ask you and implore you not to take out the Highway 89 widening project. And it does include a roundabout. That is not the whole project. There's more to it, as Councilwoman Wilcox noted in her, when she talked about it. It is in conjunction with Highway 89 widening that ADOT is gonna do. And unlike the others that spoke earlier against the roundabout, I'm gonna speak for. I was never a roundabout fan until I've been with ADOT and looked at the statistics and they've given, and they are safer. The second thing is, what maybe they don't know, is that there is gonna be a roundabout. ADOT is gonna put a roundabout at Perkins Drive. Whether anybody likes it or not, it's going in. So, to say this is a, you know, the highway is gonna be slowed down, it's gonna be slowed down by various roundabouts. ADOT loves roundabouts. They're here to stay. They're not, they're not going away. And unlike, again, the others, I live in the area where we're gonna put this roundabout, and it is not just for this new development. It's been needed for years, or something's been needed. And if you put a stoplight, I guarantee you, as people come down, coming north to south, which I hike the Constellation Trail just about every morning with my dog, and I have to move right over to the very white line to make sure that they pass me on the right at 65 miles an hour. They don't clip you because they leave you about six inches of room. So, also remember, please, that this is one of your entrances to the city, so if you don't want it to be like Highway 69, do it right the first time. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And again, I want to reiterate that we're not gonna take anything out of the budget tonight. What we're gonna do is approve the budget, and then it, this will come up later on for further discussion and public comment and voting. Councilwoman Orr?
Yeah, I would just like to respond to Mr. James because I serve on the CPO board for our council, and we will certainly inform the council as much as we can about the Highway 89, because you're absolutely right, Mr. James. This is a part of a big picture, which is going to really be very good for Prescott in the long run. So, thank you. And I'm also not a fan of roundabouts, but I understand the issue, the safety.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. Remind everybody that there's certain things included in the overall budget, and they're there. But I'll also go back to another timeframe in history when we had ADOT up here repeatedly, week after week, month after month. Procedurally, the roundabouts are part of the highway system as we live, breathe, and speak today. ADOT loves roundabouts, and it's part of the protocol on the state highway system. Fact that we're gonna inherit the highway system when they're done building the roundabout and we get to take care of it, that's just the way that works.
Okay. Any further public comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'm glad that other members of the council are allowed to speak about the roundabout issue. I, I just wanted the general public to understand that there was a bigger picture. That's the reason why I brought it up in the context of Walden Ranch.
Okay. I understand. Thank you. I will take one more comment from the public?
Bruce Senko, 3042 La Cuesta, Prescott. I guess I had a question. Is the general fund part of the operating budget that we're, you're approving today?
Yes.
Okay. So, I understand, did, did we approve a contract without knowing where the money is yet? I mean, the contract that we talked about with the erosion project, is that something that happened?
It's on last year's budget. The $100,000 is in...
No. It, the, in reference to the parking lot and retaining wall, it would be part of the FY17 budget. There is an airport budget adopted that calls for $938,000